All right. Bring the meeting to order. New items of discussion. We have Alyssa Gregg with us. She'd like to give us a presentation. Welcome, Alyssa.
Hi, thank you.
I can introduce you real quick. Come on. Alyssa, you were going to.
No, I don't. I can do it, you can do it.
Okay. Well, last fall, we were talking about population migration and the fact that not much has really been done in terms of understanding why people are leaving Warren County. And so I have a background in econometrics. And so I asked Gage, Professor, what's his name?
Gajan.
Gajan, from Pitt Bradford, if he had any ideas on how we could do a study on population migration, doing a multivariate regression analysis essentially in order to isolate determining factors in why people move out of rural communities like Warren into other places and why. So he highly recommended Alyssa Gregg. And so I went over there a couple of times and met with them to set up a study. And I believe the Senate, being part of your capstone, correct? So Alyssa just graduated from Pitt Bradford Economics, right? And just recently got a job at Northwest Savings. So definitely want to thank you for, first of all, the work that you did on this study. It looks really good. And the other, I also want to thank Northwest, I assume, for letting you negotiate around our schedule. So with that, let me turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thanks for having me, everybody. Like Ben said, my name is Alyssa Gregg. We, I guess we'll just dive right in. So like Ben said, we were contacted last fall and he wanted to know why people were leaving Warren County. So the study below is what came from that. It's two-parted. The first part, round one, as it will be called, uses the same variables that were used by Alexander and Sebelo 2006 model to model net in-state migration. So it was between states rather than counties. So I had to change the variables just a little bit so that it would fit to a county level. And you'll see why in a minute. The second round used additional variables, including health factors retrieved from county health rankings and roadmaps, as well as average commute time within the county. All of the data that I used has been compiled into multiple Excel files. There's so many Excel files. Data retrieval is the hardest part of this. And it's important to note that both of the models will show that two counties are unavailable because we could not find reliable tax data for those two counties. For whatever reason, we retrieved their data from Pennsylvania, P D C E D, Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, and those two counties were not listed in their tax data. All right. So round one, this gets pretty wordy, but these are all of the variables that were used. So net migration was found to be a function of median household income, cost of living, employment percent change, average daily maximum temperature in January, number of hazardous waste sites present, toxic chemical releases, state and local spending per pupil, per capita county tax burden, taxes percent of personal income, coastline present, that's a yes or no, basically, and then miles of coastline present, death and gift taxes, per capita state income tax burden, and state and income tax burden as a percent of personal income. So obviously, a few changes had to be made to make this fit a Pennsylvania county model. So first off, the presence of coastline and the total miles of coastline present had to be eliminated for this study because obviously Pennsylvania doesn't exactly have any ocean coastline. And we couldn't identify a reliable source at a county level. It would be quite interesting to try and fit that to Kinzu area, like larger lakes and riverside in Pennsylvania. Other changes that were made include death and gift taxes, per capita income tax burden were combined into per capita tax burden as a whole. And then state and income tax burden as percent of personal income was changed to total taxes as percent of personal income to align with the aforementioned variable. This category includes total taxes collected within each county as provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. So the website or the organization that this data was provided from was split into these categories. And so we used all tax data versus just death and gift taxes. So this was the result of the first one. It's a lot of numbers and the only thing that really matters is R squared and the T value. So the R squared value is .60, which indicates that 60% of the variance in net migration was found using this model. Our T values, we usually look for something that is, has an absolute value of 2, so that's ignoring the sign. And we don't actually have one in this model, which indicates that none of these variables are extremely influential in this particular model.
So your thesis was MT and what was that again?
Which one?
MT.
MT is... Oh, my goodness.
Oh, like essentially HWS. Is that an acronym?
HWS is... I have it written down here. Had to use all of these acronyms and now I can't.
Yeah.
HWS is hazardous waste sites present.
Oh, interesting. So that was close to significant.
And then maximum daily temperatures, which surprised me because maximum daily temperatures in Pennsylvania, you can imagine, don't change per county that much. Between the states, it varies a lot. As you can imagine, Florida versus Washington State or Maine, there's quite a big jump there. So for it to be influential in Pennsylvania is still a little bit more interesting.
By the way, just to make it really clear, what we were trying to do is think about all of the variables that people suggest is why they want to leave Warren County. So for instance, if someone says the schools aren't that great, then one thing that we would want to do is isolate whether or not that actually has an overall significance in the reason that people would move. Another would be jobs. Some people suggested they move due to the weather. So we were trying to isolate those and see if that's really true or not.
So yeah, like Ben said, you can see that those two categories are close to influential according to this statement. The other one is that SPP, and that is spending per pupil. So the amount that you spend, or the county spends, per student within the boundaries.
And that's negative?
Yes. Oddly enough.
Interesting. It's counterintuitive.
The, my theory on that is the original model accounts for positive versus negative. And when Gage had me run this, we didn't put that in there. But I, side note, this is going to end up being, I will actually be studying a master's degree in August, and Gage wants me to use this county migration as my master's thesis. So more work will actually be done on this model.
Fantastic. Well, we'll have you back in a year, too.
About a year and a half. All right. So in round two, factors of public health, as well as average commute time, were added. So as far as the factors that we used for public health, provided a lot of data. We used a website called county health rankings and roadmaps. So much data was available on this site, but we narrowed it down to four different categories that basically intuitively suggested that they would affect migration. So there were some things that, when you looked at it, it seemed like it would be more of an effect of migration rather than a cause of it, and other things that just didn't relate to it whatsoever, like, I can't think of a specific example, but there was a lot of things that you'd look at it and say it would not matter to anybody. And then commute time is listed as, oh, hello. There we go. In an ongoing study by Harvard University, it remains one of the most significant factors in escaping poverty. So I thought that was something that I learned over the summer of 2016 in part of a research project. So I wanted to see how that would fit into the study. And it turns out that that is a very influential factor. It is the last one, that ACT, is average commute time. So you can see this, based on the R squared value, this model captures an extra 12% of the variability in migration. So then you can see the other variables there are... To, we have median household income, obviously. Um, where did it go? Median household income is that first one. The next one is spending per pupil.
Still negative.
Then number of violent crimes is the NBC, and then average commute time is the last one.
I find it fascinating that the violent crimes is a negative factor. Do you know what that means?
Um...
I mean, probably it's just a correlation, not causation.
Right. One thing that we... Number of violent crimes or spending per pupil. Yeah, it was very interesting to us that those both were related as negative. And then average commute time didn't surprise, like, me in particular at all, and Gage found it very interesting as well. Yeah, that's my...
So to be absolutely clear, your most significant factor is that people are moving to where the shortest commute time is to their work?
Yes. And I think, just like, in my opinion, I believe that average commute time would be directly related to median household income.
Exactly.
So my next step, honestly, in this would be detect for multi-colin... What is it? Collinearity, where all of the, if each individual variable here is related to another one. Because you can see that some of these changed quite drastically when I added other variables. So I believe that specifically average commute time and median household income are, would obviously, if anybody else, hopefully somebody else feels that way, would be directly related.
It would also be interesting, over time, to run this like multiple times in order to pick up on any auto-correlation.
Mm-hmm.
Did you test for heterosclasticity?
I love that word. No, it is. I didn't believe that that was word.
I left my source in my office, just so you guys know. I'm glad to ask.
So basically, this first round, economics talk. So additional studies are definitely going to be done on this. But we believe that this is a reliable first model and steps to be taken to address the factors such as average commute time, spending per pupil, attacking nonviolent crime, and then, or number of violent crime, not nonviolent crime, and then median household income. And those would, obviously, individuals here have a better idea of how to address those issues than I would, but, so I won't give any direct recommendations on those. You guys know Warren County better than I would, so...
Sure. Still, this is really interesting. And then the median household income is also interesting, just that it's negative. So do you have any big takeaways from this that you wanted to share? Or what other variables do you think you want to try next?
More variables that I would add would be from that health. The roadmaps and, what is it, county roadmaps, had so many more variables on health, and I will look deeper into that for starters. I would want to get more in depth with potentially the crime statistics. And again, I'm the heterosclasticity, I can't even say it. Check for collinearity and all of that. And then from there, I would want to look into each individual variable and see if, like, what was causing that particular one. Because median household income could be something as simple as need to offer, I can meet, but pull in jobs that pay more, or it can be something...
Right. Right. That needs to be broken down further.
Right. What causes somebody to meet, what causes that instead?
Right.
Could you jump back to your first screen where you identified your acronym?
For sure.
Did you say health here, or just choosing as one category?
Health is one category, but there are a lot of different things that fall into that category. And those include, on here it was, I'd have to go back to the other one to look at it. Things like drinking water violations, number of violent crime, some percent with college, and access to exercise opportunities were ones that I had added from that.
So it didn't really have anything to do with proximity of a hospital?
No.
Have anything to do with death rates or anything that way? Or any diseases that were to that area?
One interesting variable to put in there might be average population age, because my suspicion could, or my theory, hypothesis, rather, since we're actually talking scientific, would be that younger people would move to where other younger people are. And so we'd be able to pick up on that or get a sense of it, or at least test that hypothesis. But, well, but then you have to break out, because I believe the people that move here, if I was going to take a guess based on the American Community Survey, there are two populations that are moving out of Warren County that are significant. One, of course, we see when we look at the inter-county transfers from here to places like Florida and South Carolina. And then the places where we have younger people moving to center county, well, my hypothesis is that they are younger people moving to center county, Beaver County, Butler County, Bucks County, et cetera, because they're probably getting educated and then moving to the bigger cities. So it'd be interesting to see if that's significant.
And one other factor that we wanted to add in was to see if a county possessed what's called a monopoly city, is what Gage called it. Basically, one city that is being held up by one company. So for example, Bradford is basically held up by Zippo at this point.
Right.
Or ARG. So if that is present within a county, if that has any bearing on migration or not.
And that would be really easy to determine because the census data has a category for number of businesses with over 500 employees. So you'd be able to just yank that by the, what's that code that each county has a code in?
Because of the N.
Yeah. Whatever. You could pull that directly from the census data.
NSIC or something like that.
Yeah, that is it. NC, yeah, NSIC, that's it. Yep. You could run that, it'd be fascinating. So I wanted to open it up, I guess, to the group. Do you have any thoughts on other reasons why people might move away or into a rural county like ours that might, we might want to include in the next go-around? One thing that didn't end up here in here, which would be hard, would be school ranking. Because I hear people say that they want to move out of the county because, you know, the school rankings aren't that good compared to like Bucks County or something.
I think that was included in one of the websites that I had gotten all the spending per pupil on.
Yeah, okay. And spending per pupil could, would be correlated, but I don't think it would be cause-related.
I think that you...
Could you jump to your screen with the data?
The last one?
Yeah. Excellent.
I think you could add something for amenities, you know, figure out a way to calculate that, you know? Stuff that's related to socialization and entertainment.
It'd be a completely different study, but the other interesting thing would be a tourism study, looking at, and it wouldn't have to be limited to Pennsylvania. That could just be, like, how many national monuments or something are within, you know, the state or county or region, access to direct interstates, proximity to big cities, whatever. That'd be relatively easy to come up with. It'd be really hard to get the data for it, but that could be really fascinating. And I wonder if there is some sort of tourism variable that couldn't fill in this.
Only other thing that I would note with this is, this did only compare counties in Pennsylvania, so it wouldn't necessarily take into factors if somebody moved, if they prefer the cold, so they moved up to Maine, or if they moved out of the country entirely, or if they moved down to Florida. So it didn't include those. The original study, the only non-influential factor was actually the tax categories. That was not a fact, not considered an influential factor in whether somebody moved to, into a state or not. So I thought that was very interesting.
Yeah. I had actually referenced that before when we were looking at the taxation issue. Because it's surprising to me that that is a factor in whether a business moves internationally or whether a business moves somewhere, but not necessarily where individuals move within a area. So businesses are moving to the south, to Texas, et cetera, and they're moving out of places like California and Pennsylvania at varying rates, of course. But the population is following them, I think, because of the income, not because of the taxation on them personally.
I think you might even find a difference if you could say or dictate that down by age in a way. Because when you say taxes doesn't make a difference, I think once you retire, especially you kept talking about Florida. Pennsylvania, your retirement tax is exempt, and in Florida, your retirement tax is exempt. And I believe it is in Texas, too. A lot of other states tax that, so population as a whole, you might not see that, but retirement, I think you will. And I think retirement, both income tax and property tax makes a big difference on influences.
There's going to be a lot that goes into further rounds of this study because there's such a difference in, I don't want to say values of if people are moving because they're part of the older generation or the younger generation. For median household income, I don't want to generalize too much, but it's looking like the younger generation today is actually moving towards nonprofit companies and organizations and public service and versus the private sector, obviously, that pays a little bit less. So I think it'll be interesting, and so maybe that is why median household income isn't as influential as we think it should be. But further rounds will definitely shed some light on that.
Moving to a much poorer by choice, too, because we also are losing a lot of the industries and things that used to be able to provide those jobs.
And that could be another factor, whether something was shut down or whether a business moved, a large business moved to locations.
I think the hardest part, without dealing with survey data, is that, getting to like your question, my bet is that you would find property tax is actually really an insignificant variable if you compared it to something like, where do my grandkids live? So I bet if you'd be willing to pay an excessive, thank you, property tax, if you could be near your grandkids. And in fact, I can think of several examples of business executives from Warren County that have moved to wealthy places in Pittsburgh solely because of that.
You hit a key when you said executives ago.
I think it was...
A company has this many executives and this many other employees.
It'd be very interesting, and I think, based on what you said, it might be beneficial then to look specifically at where the younger generation is moving. Because as the older generation retires, they would be looking to move closer to their family potentially. Or maybe just get out of here and move right to Florida, who knows?
And my theory is that if we could capture the people that graduated between, let's say, four and 16 years ago, and understand why they're not moving back to Warren County, and if we could solve that problem, then most likely that means their parents would want to stay here rather than retire somewhere else. So I think that is the leading indicator that we need to look at, would be, whatever, graduates from 20, I don't know, 2000 to 2014.
Might you poll a few?
Yeah, well, that gets expensive.
It's hard to get in contact with some of them, or get the data.
I'll give you four, and as soon as you can contact them, you might go down to Warren County.
Maybe it wouldn't be that hard. I don't know.
I think we've talked previously about...
We didn't talk about building a survey.
We talked previously about trying to get information from the high school about...
How many would you need, like 60 in order to make a, you'd need like 60 names probably in order to make something that's barely significant.
Right.
So, I don't know, we could maybe do that. Should give it a try. And that, by the way, would have, I mean, for a master's thesis, I think, would be narrow enough to be fascinating. I mean, this is fascinating, impactful is what I meant.
Do you have anything else to add, Alyssa?
That's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions for Alyssa? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We really appreciate your time.
Really appreciate the only effort. I mean, I know how much time you spend on Excel sheets. Hundreds of hours, most likely.
I create a few of them.
Yep, I believe it. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
We look forward to hearing back.
Hopefully, something good in there, if you guys need it.
Yeah, sure there will be. We'll look forward to the future, please.
Yeah.
Thanks. Look on your new job.
We'll move on to insight technology. We have an agreement to...
Just ask that we move Bill's swing up, just because he has to leave.
Oh, yes, LexisNexis Green with TaxClen.
So what we were using is, we're going to do it to find property owners, but we need to voice them in the cell, right, do diligence in contacting these people. We were using Spokio, which is just an online website to find people. Basically, it's like glorified white pages, pretty much. If you go on whitepage.com and do a search, they keep doing that over and over again. Eventually, they just stop you because they realize you're a business trying to find people. So we use Spokio, which is, let's see, $403 a year to use Spokio. And I guess that Spokio is a glorified white pages, so you can search people, but the searches aren't that great. With LexisNexis is a company, it's also web-based, it's a company where you can search for people, but the searches are fine-tuned and reliable. And a lot of other directors have used this to search for property owners and such, to notify them. The increase would be $170 a year, so go from $430 to $600 a year. And basically, how the fee structure works is it's $50 a month, but you pay the $600 a year upfront. So $50 a month, and then you would get a credit for that month, $50. If you don't use all of that, it gets kind of rolled over, I guess, so to speak. But you could use all of it, so say like July, August, September, most likely we'd go over. But then come October, November, December, January, early March, we're not doing that much search, law searches, it kind of evens out.
Did it count? Could you end up going over beyond what, I mean, when you said...
You could possibly go over, it's $10 a year, possibly. I really don't see us doing that. Because the bulk of our searches are going to be for, you know, a short three-month span, where we'll just be hitting it, and then it'll just die off.
Is there any other, I mean, what other departments do we know that use LexisNexis? There's got to be somebody.
I use it for my office or all my federal laws.
Do you have a law library at the prison also?
I did contact other departments to find out, okay, maybe we can kind of, kind of tag on as a user, but they use this for other things like law, they don't use it for searching people that I'm aware of that is running here, so. I did reach out, I tried to maybe get tagged on for a cheaper price, but...
Did you have Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, the Sheriff's Department has a CLEAR program, did you ask them? Clean?
Clean.
Clean, yeah. Which is really robust, and as I recall, when we approved that contract, it was actually with the express understanding that you and the DA's office and a couple other offices can tag on and use it.
And tag on and use it. Is it a program or is it web-based?
I don't remember.
I don't think it's web-based for some reason.
Most of them are at this point. I mean, that's what they, they browse it.
When they browse it, they even check for utilities registered in that name, so if they're, you know, transient, they're running somewhere.
So Marcy would have that.
F Marcy, yeah, sure.
All right. I'll reach out to her and see if it's possible to tag on to her stuff, but...
I think we approved up to 30 users or something. There's never really that many deputies.
Yeah. All right. I'll give her a buzz and see if that's a possibility.
And if not...
I'm not sure it's restrictive because it's law enforcement, so I might not, I'm not sure.
I remember asking about that, and TaxClen wasn't allowed to use it, I think.
Okay.
You'd probably have to sign your life away, but, you know.
All right. I'll reach out to her and see if not, I'll let you know the user, LexisNexis, if possible.
Okay. And you checked with any other users in the building of LexisNexis to see if it could just be another component of the system?
Yeah, I checked DA's office, and there's another office I could check, too. I can't remember who it was, but yeah, I've checked other...
Probably Linda Kreiser.
Yeah, that's what I checked as well, yeah.
And how does this fit within your budget? Would you be able to juggle something?
Yeah, it shouldn't be.
Okay.
Yeah, you said that you used it.
But I don't use it as a web-based program. I get folks in that have current laws, because those don't change, they change annually, so we, I buy the set of books every two years, but they don't change, so I don't warrant buying them every year.
Oh, they'll...
But LexisNexis is not cheap.
No.
Their stuff is expensive, but it's, it's really good.
And it comes in modules, though, so what you're talking about and what Phil's talking about are not the same.
Two is in the end of the day.
All right, so you're gonna do some checking.
Yeah, I'll just go to the party and if not, I'd like to go still, tell them if that's a possibility.
All right. Okay, thanks, Phil. Anyone have any more questions for Phil before he leaves? All right, now insight technology agreement. I'm assuming our solicitor has reviewed this, if that's correct?
I believe so.
And there was no, nothing that stood out, it was needing updated or changed?
I think this is pretty similar to what was previously there. I think the differences were there were some items that were broken out in the previous contract that are not.
Okay. He has two agreements submitted for approval, right? Two contracts?
I'm not aware of that.
Is there a telecom contract also, so is this the telecom or is this?
This is his general contract.
Okay, it's a general.
Yeah, the telecom we don't have yet, right?
Right.
No, I've seen it.
I haven't.
He sent it to us all.
Well, anyway, it's not in this packet, this is just a general.
Okay.
He sent that to us through Pam or an email?
He sent it to the commission, no?
I think, yeah, it's possible.
Weeks ago, probably. I want to say I was in California or something at the time, so.
All right. So any discussion on this agreement?
It's in line with what we budgeted, right?
Yeah. I don't see any, I would like to review his old contract, I guess, before we vote on this on Wednesday. Are we putting this on our agenda?
And I can email you prior contact.
Okay, thank you. All right, I would just like to add, just so everyone's aware, that the proceeds from the timber sales came in on Friday and due to the governor's sequestering, it was six point nine percent of the funds, we anticipated receiving five hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and we received four hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen. And I just want everyone to be aware, this came into our general fund, the county keeps none of this. This goes out to the municipalities. So, let's see, funds sequestered for payment due to the Warren County School District and its municipalities totaled thirty-six thousand seventy-nine dollars. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Are some of them supposed to be sequestered?
Yes. So we are short.
Yeah, so we've begged people to get an allocation sheet from the Allegheny National Forest as to how much timber land does it need to one of the townships and municipalities. There's a covenant taken out for the school district and then the rest is distributed back down to the townships and boroughs by a schedule. All of those payments, the school district and all the townships and boroughs have to be reduced in total by over thirty-six thousand because of what was sequestered. I have no idea if they will eventually have to release that money or not. I've been told that they sequestered funds a few years ago and later were forced to release them. I don't know if that same thing will happen or not.
All right, I just wanted to mention that. Moving on, does anyone else have anything new to discuss?
Let's ask Dan to be here. I sent you guys this at the end of last week or whatever and I just wanted to discuss it or review it with you just generally. This is a proposal from Michelle Nestor of Nestor Resources and this is related to, basically, this is for her to put together, to work with us to put together basically a feasibility study slash plan for a recycling center. This is something that she's done for other counties and it's, to some degree, it's pretty standard. There's a couple of things that I wanted to draw your attention to on this where the last couple of pages where it talks about projected costs. And I just wanted to explain this a little bit with Dan's help. So basically, what she does is if we agree to go, to go with her, she will put together a grant application to the state. DEP generally will cover eighty percent of the overall expenses for the project. And then there are a couple of options for the county's portion of it. One is to just outright pay cash, you know, a cash percentage of the overall project. So in order to put the entire plan together, the, the overall expenses that she projects is forty-eight thousand dollars. If we were to just pay cash in order to put the, the study together, it would be roughly nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars of that. A second option, which is the one that we've been discussing, or I've been discussing with planning zoning, is a, what is called a soft match, which is basically, we work directly with Michelle on the project and then the time that we accrue, whether my own or Dan's and others along with the project is accrued as, and this includes salary benefits, everything, as a match from the county. So the soft match setup is the one, obviously, that I'd be more interested in pursuing and in that case, the only cost to the county is the literal time to help with the, the study together with Michelle. I just wanted to make that clear to everybody because when reading it, it can get a little bit gobbledygooky and, you know, I just wanted to give those two options to everybody.
Have you considered this, including this concept into the EIP, too, didn't we?
Yes, to an extent. The, the EIP really focuses on financial elements and this will certainly be a part of that. Yeah, it's actually divided up into six different tasks that are outlined on pages two and three. So it's possible, I think it's worth researching to see how much the EIP could potentially contribute to this somehow. But it, it's kind of a complete workup. So, I mean, she would be working on, you know, the site setup, equipment, the whole nine yards.
But just remind me of the EIP, you have to have the program in place before you can make a new agreement. So if we agreed to this on Wednesday, then it would not qualify for the EIP. I believe that's the case.
Yeah, and I don't think we're up against an absolute time crunch here on the decision by the.
So if we waited another few weeks, it wouldn't be a big deal?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, but the soft, whatever, was that what you were calling it?
Soft match, that would be.
Sounds great, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
If you were to reimburse eighty percent.
Are you, you currently, I'm assuming that would be your salaries and your time invested?
And any supplies and so forth that we provide.
Are there any other grants or anything else that you're working on that your time is being used in that manner?
For the solid waste plan, we've done that. There have been other grant programs with the DCED for some planning documents like comprehensive plan.
Currently, though?
Not, currently, we have just this solid waste plan that, that we're using the soft match or any kind of services on. But in the past, we've, we've done that sort of approach with the Department of Community and Economic Development on planning related documents.
So you would have to.
Yeah, I got document, time, time and any expenses associated with it. All record keeping.
Yes.
Just like CDVG. And that's kind of the thing, is this is gonna be an entirely different contract than the solid waste contract.
Right.
And kind of the reason that we came up with this was because it became clear that there was no way to do it in the current solid waste contract. Yeah, let's go to above and beyond in terms of the county center. Yeah, because she, she works with us on that in order to, you know, develop how waste management is gonna be handled within the county and this is specifically for the idea of revamping the entire recycling setup within the county related to a recycling center. Does anybody have any questions?
I'd like to look this proposal over a little more.
Well, and I think, like, we're not in a huge time crunch. It's something that we, you know, we'd like to make a decision on, but if, if the, if we think that the EIP is something that we wanna pursue in relation to this and there's some time that we need to wait, then, you know, that'll be. Yeah, I think, you're correct, and the EIP looking at the financial side of things. But this, this grant funding here, if we're successful, would come through the DEP through their nine-on-one program for, specifically for solid waste planning. And recycling is included in, in solid waste.
Right.
I know you've been talking about the recycle, about a recycling center, about a plan for it, you know, feasibility study and I understand it's very in the beginning, looking at things, stages. Have you done anything in reaching out to the public and asking them about their desires for this? Because down there, eventually, it's gonna take some tax dollars. You're gonna get as much as you can from state funding and I know every other source is possibly out there, but it's, as the paper done.
Well, one of the things that I've been very surprised by is the overwhelmingly positive response that I've gotten to this. I expected there to be more concern related to it, to the idea, whether it be from the municipalities or from people within the community and, and really, it's been surprisingly positive where, and not to say that everybody's negative or anything like that, but that, you know, there are people that already want to volunteer at the center in order to work there. All of the municipalities that I've talked to are really excited about the idea of, you know, mitigating their costs, having a better solution or they can take more materials. The municipalities that do have recycling setups are really happy with the setups that they have because they've seen dramatic reduction in trash and, and the roadways, the rivers. I was really amazed this past Friday when I went to Tidou and saw their recycling center. They have a center down there that actually turns a profit where they give some, you know, sometimes it's upwards in the, in the ten thousand dollar range back into their community through their recycling center because of the way they have this set up. It's the most unbelievable do-it-yourself thing you've ever seen because half of the machinery in there is homemade equipment with engines and everything and they, they bundle everything up. They, they have contracts individually with all kinds of different companies in the region and then they ship the stuff out. And they think that we're nuts for paying advanced disposal to haul our stuff to Buffalo and have some portion of it end up in a landfill somewhere when they're recycling every piece and everything they've got to you. And whenever I walk into a place like that and I see what they're doing, I go, there's gotta be a way that we can do this, like, you know, regionally and, and have the, give the municipalities involved in it. I'm sure at some point, when, you know, the rubber hits the road, that's usually when the complaints start, is that we'll probably get, there'll probably be more concern of like, oh, God, how is this gonna be set up? But I, I think that our, everybody that's supportive of this, their general perspective is is that they wanna do all the legwork possible in order to mitigate costs to the county, make it sustainable long-term, you know, and make it a real solution where it's gonna produce fruit. If we're doing this and we're just gonna add cost to everything, it's not worth it, you know? It's not worth it for anybody. So, you know, every indication that we have is that it's, you know, it's gonna work well. It's just, it's gonna, there's gonna be a lot of footwork, you know, and there's gonna be a lot of babysubs, too. That's my response to that. How does everybody feel about it?
I have a question. Being that I come from a township that has recycling, can I get a copy of that so-called proposal letter?
Sure, I, I've got one, you can have this one.
I'd like to read it over because we are quite concerned about recycling in our township.
And why is that, Joe?
Well, first of all, the cost, we all know that. We were averaging over two thousand dollars a year just for our recycling. Is it controlled by this lay township residents? No. We get a variety of people from all the townships, but we're at least keeping the stuff off out of the rivers and streams and in the woods to most, most of the time. You go and lay township anywhere and I'll show you where people are too. I don't know, but they're not properly disposing of their, it's like, we have stuff in our bins that are not supposed to be there. And I'm all for having something similar to what Tidou has, but we, the county's been trying for a long time to do something and we're at the point now, is it worth us spending the money? Or do we wanna somehow only put, lay township residents can use it? You know, that's not gonna work because that'll, that'll cause us to hire somebody. And the old trick is, you, the people said to us, secure your bins after people leave your office before a flood and I'll tell you what happens. We lock the gates and everybody dumps their trash in front of you. So you, you don't win that way. You just cause more work for the employees of the township. But yes, it's gotta be addressed in this county, but, and this possibly is. But I'd like to just read this over because I have quite a few other questions, but I'll wait until I read this study. Thank you for giving me a copy.
You're welcome.
I have two quick things to bring up and then I need to leave.
Well, I would like to bring this up first, if you don't mind, because I want you to be in on this before you leave. I understand that Enterprise has come to us asking us to entertain signing with them for their gas card, the WEX card. And I know we currently are involved in a contract with Sunoco WEX card and so I thought it was an appropriate time to request from our fiscal director, Judy, to gather all the information from QuickFill, you know, a mobile company, Sunoco, and then Enterprise and compare what they offer at the county and see what might work out best for the county. She has done some research here, I think you all have a copy of this. I guess I wanted to bring this up so that, did you know that?
No, I had this when, when you were here last week. I didn't know if you took home it or not. I, you and Cindy and I were in here talking, I can't remember if it was after business meeting last week or when it was.
Okay.
I think Jeff had already answered that.
I know with Sunoco, the advantage of being with them is that there's no fees involved and we receive a rebate at the end of the year. And with QuickFill, I believe the advantage of that would be that they offer, I think it's five cents on every gallon that you purchase if you use their card. And then if you fill the tank, it's an additional three cents, I believe, per gallon. And there may be other additional benefits to that. With the Enterprise, I didn't really see any advantage of going with them over the other two, but I would like to open that up for discussion and maybe there's something that I've missed. Also, you know, United Refining is one of our largest employers in the county. Might be a great gesture for the county to sign on with the WEX card with United.
Local business profits, but you sign on with QuickFill and that's an indication that shows them that the county, we are with QuickFill.
Right.
Completely township and we have no compliance, they treat us. And you have to fill up, which in our case is all wear vehicles and film. I'd highly recommend that you locate the QuickFill card.
You're talking about the fleet management card?
Yeah.
You're talking about the fleet management card?
Yeah.
Yeah, that does look good as opposed to a WEX card generally. I'd be interested in entertaining that, I'm not sure I'd be in. But the WEX card is not really local business, per se. But if you're talking about going with the fleet management system, that's interesting.
Well, in my opinion, it, it does become local because if you sign up for a WEX card with United, then they're using QuickFill stations.
We already use QuickFill stations.
But we would then be getting the advantage of using that card in those stations.
One of the problems we had with that card was if you travel out of the area, there were stations that would not accept it.
This, this is the WEX QuickFill card, so it is just like the WEX Sunoco card. It has all the same stations into it. So you get the discount when you purchase at a QuickFill. You can still purchase at Sunoco, you can purchase at a mobile, you can purchase, just like our current WEX card. We only get the discount on the, the QuickFill ones, which they're loaded right now.
I couldn't use it once.
Yeah, that was a straight-out QuickFill card that they have for you. You are.
And I just think they wouldn't take your money. So I think they knew you were.
So I think the advantage then lies in the discount because we're county, we're using the QuickFills in our county. That's typically where we're gonna fill up to go on our trips, so.
And the majority of the charges, I tried to run this month by month, and on a regular monthly basis, we're averaging anywhere between fifty and seventy percent of the charges already being made at QuickFill and United affiliates that would get the discount through the WEX program if we were using theirs. Um, Sunoco is, is up there with a close second on the most frequently used ones. And then you have a scattering of little off-brand that, I'm not even sure what overall big station they may be plugged into, refinery or whatever.
So Ben, I understand that there was some sort of an agreement with Enterprise signed on May first with them in regard to this? Can we back out of that?
I don't know what that is.
I'll have to go get it.
My, my understanding of this was just that we had had a conversation about this and they were, they were pitching it because it would tie into their interface. You know, as far as like tracking the information on the vehicles. But I, my understanding of it too is that we weren't gonna do anything until we got a clear idea of what the overall costs were gonna be one way or the other. And I, and, and I, you know.
Yeah, I think, um, last time I talked to them about it, they were gonna get it back to us on what kind of a rebate they could offer. I know that Enterprise waived the, uh, fees and all that, so-
There is no rebate.
No, I, you haven't, you're not familiar with this, I've been talking to them offline. Um, I got jumped about it last, whenever, so.
Well, this was signed on May first, so I guess it's an agreement to go with their fleet management. And I'd really like to have an opportunity to-
They haven't, uh, they haven't issued anything yet, so.
Well, they have to Pam and they have to Home Services.
What do you mean, they, they haven't issued cards yet?
They're on their way, they asked for the PIN numbers and, and all the vehicles.
Right, but I talked to them as recently as last Friday. And as far as I know, it is not moving forward because their question's asked, so I put a pause on it.
Okay.
Anyway, I gotta go. The, there's a capital request here for body armor. Um, this is for the sheriff's deputies. Uh, from what I understand, half of it is covered, uh, and then the other half I incorporated into the, um, school resource officer budget. This is basically because we would be hiring part-time sheriff's deputies to be school resource officers. So it's already kind of built in, um, so I think that's ready to sign. And then this is, um, a situation where one of the human, um, services vehicles died last year. And rather than replace it or pay to fix it, we put it on the lot and then sold it and forgot to order a new car. So, that's all this one is. So, from my perspective, this one's ready to sign as well, I don't know if you wanna sign it?
I'm glad you brought up something about the school resource officer because there's some questions and I don't know if we have to address them here, Linda. Um, are we to be billing the school district for that? Are they just automatically giving us a stipend every month?
No, we'll be billing them for it.
Who will be billing them?
I assumed the initial information would be generated in the sheriff's office and it would be sent to you. But it won't start until-
Have they started?
No.
Okay, they haven't started it yet? I think we need to be sure we set up GL codes, just like if, if we have Sheriff's Department or Task Force or DAM Control or whatever else, we need to set up GL codes. So we're sure that we're capturing all the hours on that. I, truthfully, wasn't even sure if we'd started it yet or not.
No, it won't start until October, or, um, whenever school starts back up.
Now, you had mentioned something about covering part of the bulletproof vest in the school resource budget?
Yeah, within the hourly rate, I think those things last for like two years. I don't know why Kevlar must not be certified after a couple of years, whatever. Uh, anyway, it's over a two-year period based on the estimated hours we included, whatever, three cents an hour or something in order to cover any-
Equipment costs.
Yeah.
So regardless of what shows on our payroll coming through, we have, um, so many hours, we're billing them on that agreed upon hourly rate because that took in the, the vehicle and it took in everything else.
Actually, I think the vehicle is separate, the vehicle is twenty-five dollars a day if they use it. And then the hourly rate includes all the other things.
Okay.
Every single benefit, if it's a full-time employee, um, any, uh, dry cleaning costs, literally everything.
Okay.
I mean, we might lose a cent here and there, but it, because it's not precise, we did round it up or down a couple cents either way, but, you know, overall, it should be revenue.
And some costs will be realized some long, so it'll wash out.
It'll all wash out, and we're doing something that's worthwhile for the community.
So I think that we've kind of got away from this, so can I expect that we can have a conversation about the benefits and way the pros and cons of going with United as compared to Sunoco and-
Yeah, I mean, I think that we definitely have to have a further discussion about it because my understanding of that contract was that, that the fleet management didn't have to incorporate the gas card, that the gas card was an entirely separate issue, so-
It is.
So that's something that we can discuss, you know, at another time.
Well, I think that is, I, I mean, it, I'm hoping you put pause on this because I would really like to hear from United.
Okay.